I call a meeting to order. Can we re-stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, if you could have a moment to sign up for the people in Florida, just go show your hands.
Well, we can.
Yep.
Thank you. There will be no student -- well, naturally, we're being recorded. There will be no student of the month or student advisory board tonight, and the meeting is videotaped. Agenda adjustments, still, I just read them off. I don't think we have anything else to do.
No.
Now, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Situ and Brocklin, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Seeing none, that's for the 24th and 30th?
Correct.
All in favor? In unanimous. Student of the month, we don't have. Staff member of the month, we do have.
You don't hide all day long. Why are you hiding now? Members of the school committee in public, it's a great pleasure to introduce Michelle Craig, who is our adjustment counselor. Let me just read off some of the things here. What did we do before Mrs. Michelle Craig joined the South Shore community in September of 2016? Many of us often ask that question, and few of us can give you an answer. She has quickly ingratiated herself into the very lifeblood that is SSVT, so much so that she does bleed Viking green. As an adjustment counselor, Michelle deals with many of our students in some of the worst moments of their lives. It could be the breakup of someone's first love. It is Valentine's Day. She was very busy today, folks. An issue on the home front, including the death of a friend or a family member, to a traumatizing event in the student's personal life. Michelle's overarching mission is to work with the student and the adults in that student's life to improve that young person's physical and emotional well-being. Mrs. Craig has been an integral part of the district's recent focus on emotional and social well-being for our student population. Besides presentations to the staff and meetings with students, she liaisons with many outside entities to bring in and provide outside access to programs that directly affect our students' daily life in and out of school. Students speak gloriously when they talk about the impact Michelle has had upon their lives. Mrs. Craig is always upbeat. Sometimes, that's just enough. She actually helps with your problem. I appreciate that. She is always there when I need her, even if it's a simple email to acknowledge that I'm here. She tells me, and multiple kids say this, but Michelle doesn't ever remember saying this, keep your head up and smile. So apparently, she just does that and doesn't even realize you do it. But I think the most definitive comment came from a student who said, she has the smallest office, but the biggest heart. We congratulate Mrs. Craig on being nominated by the Students of South Shore Vocational Technical High School as the staff member of the month for February 2018. This is your lovely staff member of the office.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question or anything? Seeing none, we'll go to student -- no, we don't have her. Treasury, James, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moorehead. Treasury report for January 31st of 2018. Again, chugging along nicely in the business office this time of year. Cash balances at the end of January, about $3.8 million. OPEB, again, is about $618,000, so things are going well. Page two is your income. The only income that we received in January, some interest income. We also received our regular monthly Chapter 70 aid dispersment from the Commonwealth of $359,000. Plus, as I mentioned last month, our first installment of regional transportation was received in January for $235,000. We budgeted $355,000, not knowing where the state budget was going to land. So the fact that we got $235,000, which is roughly half of what our annual number will be, will give us a favorable budget number as we move towards the end of the year. So that'll give us some wiggle room as we look at April, May, to deal with what our final end-of-year numbers look like. On the expense side, final page. Again, things are running smoothly. The total dispersments for the month were $957,000, of which over $600,000 of that was, of course, the payroll, the biggest expense in the building. We also have on line 11, leased equipment. We have our annual bus payment on the lease. Again, this is the final payment of our three-year bus schedule for $147,000. I know that we're constantly looking at options as once this bus lease is over to what's going to happen with the fleet. I know Tom, Mark, and Ruth are in constant contact regarding potential items for the bus lease. So we had $147,000, a big number, for our yearly bus lease payment. Other than that, everything is going fairly well, and there are no -- there will be no budget transfer request tonight either, so.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Hanover?
Second.
Whitman? Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous.
Jim, just one quick, when is the lease up? Is all the buses or all the leases are up there?
A seven-bus lease will be up December 31st, 2018. Right, at the end of the year.
End of this year?
Yes.
Yes. We did an annual lease because that was the -- the delivery dates were set up when we first went out for the --
I just wanted to show if it was fiscal or year?
No. It is calendar year, so we're prepared with some budget transfers in the past year to anticipate possibly going out for more buses the next cycle. I mean, there's always a potential that we can buy these buses at the end of the lease as well. That option exists for a set number per bus, and we just don't know where we are yet. That's something that to be analyzed a little bit.
Yeah, I just, good question. Was July 1st or was it fiscal or calendar?
I have a question on those. You'll probably tell me, Jim. How has the maintenance been on those propane buses? I know they pay for it, but how have they been running?
We pay for it. We pretty much pay for everything on the buses. I mean, they would pay for any warranty items, but the normal wear and tear, you know, the preventive maintenance is a lot lower than the --
And we haven't had any failures or anything? That's the --
No. I mean, there's minor issues here and there, but nothing --
If a light goes on on one of the buses, the company has been responsive, and we've got spares, and they'll bring us a spare. It's worked rather well.
Because when we brought the bus lease to the committee a couple of years ago, one of the offsetting savings was the cost to maintain the diesel buses was pretty expensive. I think one year, we spent $80,000, $90,000 on repairs of the fleet, and that has dropped significantly. Although, the other bus, the diesel buses that we've had for years, they're getting a year older too, so they're requiring more and more maintenance as well. So I think the next cycle of bus leases will allow us to retire a bunch of the old diesel buses and, again, look meaner and leaner for the repair line as we move forward, so.
Yeah, that could probably make us a little more neighbor-friendly too, if we do some of the propaines. Okay. Thank you, James. I haven't asked for motion yet, David.
Yes, you did.
Yes, we're all done. Chairman, I have nothing specific, other than Tom will discuss it later on. We've got some master facilities audit and so forth. Chairman has nothing special, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, the master facilities audit. You have a black three-ring binder in front of you. The engineering firm, DRA, brought these to us yesterday. This is the culmination of the work that the capital project subcommittee was a part of. We began this process at the end of the last fiscal year, when we earmarked some funds for this audit, and we have additional funds available for any design work that we can contract with this firm to take on. I wanted to bring to your attention just a couple of pages in the document. It is tabbed, and it follows along with a table of contents, that in section four, that's, without going back through it, you would have received a draft version of these recommendations when the gentlemen were here last month. We've made some adjustments to that. It's slightly different. Mr. Morehead and I met with Judd Christopher, the project manager. You'll notice that these recommendations, rather than being referred to as high, medium, or low, are instead referred to as short, medium, and long. We didn't want to convey the message that low priority meant eh, if you feel like it. Instead, we wanted to focus more along with the timeliness of the recommendation. I believe that this document here will be the document I'll be referring to a lot over the next few months, as I work to integrate the existing capital plan that we have, that you normally see in your white budget books, with this. And what I would like to be able to do is bring back to you periodically, but certainly not too far into the future, some agenda items for discussion in terms of how we now unpack these lists of recommendations and when we can attack some of these items. We also asked Judd to modify this because, again, it's kind of in small print, but I think it's important to note. We've added a couple of columns here. There's a call -- if you look across, about two-thirds away across the page, you'll see a column that says SA, and then you'll see a column that says LP. So SA means standalone. So I asked Judd, I want to identify those recommendations that could be, that you would say, from an engineering point of view, could be standalone projects that maybe we could fund on our own, pluck off this list, and do and be done with, so not a major systems overhaul. But that I also wanted to note, any of these items that they would recommend, we don't try to attack piecemeal, but instead look at as part of a larger project. So should we find ourselves in the near future with an MSBA invitation? The items you see with a double asterisk, most of which are considered medium range, which means it's not something this year, it's not something next year, those would be the items that would most likely be best sought after as part of an MSBA project. So my focus right now is going to be looking at the handful of priorities that are labeled short, meaning short-term, and then looking at any of these project recommendations that are standalone project items. So for instance, $250,000 to ensure the integrity of our septic system. That $250,000 might be something that I would come to use, say, in fiscal 2020, as a single item for capital expense. That could have a beginning, a middle, and end, and we're done with it. There are other items that I'll be looking at as priorities. If we're, if in a few months, we're in a position that we're budget favorable at the end of this fiscal year, I fully intend to look at this list in order to prioritize recommendations to you in July, where we might be able to reallocate some dollars. For instance, recommendations to improve access to the 1962 building, putting in ramps where there are concrete stairs. We're not violating any codes because of the grandfathering, but those are things that would be an added value to the people that use this building. It is, these estimated costs are not unreasonable, but we can also achieve a short-term goal of chipping away at some of the short-term items, and we can have the same engineering firm work with their site engineers on any necessary engineering plans, so that we could have these plans ready and we could work on this. Ultimately, what I want to bring to you is a 10-year plan, where these recommendations are easily followed over the course of 10 years. Of course, we reevaluate all the time, but I'm very pleased that this document now exists because, for your own digestion, for communications with our communities, this is where we can draw from. When we talk about bringing a 1962 building up to code, this is what, it's no longer just a catchphrase. This is what we can, this is what we can point to. And again, bringing other, you know, bringing other parts of the building, 1992 and 62, up to code as well. The other tab I'll bring to your attention is, was the other fun stuff we did as part of the subcommittee, which was to look at some of the visioning. No need to go through this again, but they, you will find the drawings that the engineers did of potential expansion projects. And what, and for subcommittee members as well, you might remember in our last meeting with them, they presented some three-dimensional drawings, not just the bird's-eye view, but a three-dimensional artist's drawing of what that would look like if you were, you know, if you were up in a drone looking down at the school from across the street, which I think is very helpful visually. The engineering firm will also be supplying me with blown-up, hard copy, foam copy versions of all of these plans, as I would intend to want to use them when we go and visit our communities, just as a backdrop in conversation. While there's nothing pressing about it now, I think the visuals are very important. This entire document has been converted to a PDF and will be placed on our school website, and I would encourage you to forward a link, let folks in your communities know that this resource exists. I think it's been, been very helpful. So again, thank you to the subcommittee for your time on this, and when the time comes, I certainly would want to pick up the conversation, because as I said last month, we shouldn't wait too long to at least start to talk through some of the, some of the strategies involved.
Yeah, somebody with lower ones. Can we interfere with the major?
That's, yes, yes. The idea that we could have, we could take care of some of these items, and it would not interfere with a major, a major project down the road. And you may remember Carl Franceschi, the lead engineer, saying that if we were to embark on a project, even something more than what we could afford in one year, $1.2 million to replace this 26-year-old roof, that the MSBA could retroactively reimburse us for those expenses. Again, those will be some of the questions and discussions we'll have in the future on this. But a lot of great work, a lot of great feedback to the firm, and I'm glad we're in this position tonight.
Well, the numbers have been cut down a lot. Really, originally, we're, you know, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but it looks like we're about 107 for all the short-term
Yes.
things to get fixed.
Yes.
And that includes the roof and the excess of this building, so it's more secure than it would need to be.
That's right, Bob. Yes, and we, there were a few items that they had initially rated as high priority, and I counseled them against it. For instance, you know, acoustical panels in the cafeteria in the lecture hall. Those were, those were budget items we were considering, but when we talked through the rationale, I wanted to make sure that if it's, if it's really listed as short-term, that there really is an impending need that we not ignore this in the next couple of years. And so that's why that list is a little bit shorter. Some of those recommendations have been deferred, and so I think it gives us more of a focus.
The 107 is a lot better than the 42, whatever it is, in short-term, you know.
Right. Yes, no, I agree.
I'll make another question. Is, in some of these smaller, if desert smaller projects, is there a possibility that our students could do? I mean, it would be a learning experience, but I don't have legal.
No, I understand, Dan. Most of these, I would say no. However, I would point to perhaps the --
Widening of doors, I mean.
That, that is probably something that we would have an outside, an outside contractor do. But I will say that there's at least one of them on here, and the number is escaping me, but it involves the repainting of the exterior steel columns, which I think came in at a, say, a $30,000 price tag. I asked the engineer, is there a special credential one needs to do that? And he said, no, that could be summertime custodial staff.
Right. I was just looking for a learning experience for the kids that are in carpentry or whatever.
Correct.
I mean, this, this would be ideal. Not only would it save the school money, but the fact is, just think how they would feel when they would say to themselves, growing up, I helped build or renovated that school.
That's right. I don't see why, on some of these projects, they couldn't at least be there as observers, but in any event, I think this is a nice itemized list, and I, you know. Actually, Dan, let me, let me give you one direct answer. Proposal 32 would be applicable, and that is the installation of ADA-accessible sinks in some of our shops. We would have the plumbing instructor in our HVAC program make a plan. HVAC could easily chip away at that over the course of the fall of the next, of next school year. That is an example of one.
ADA-accessible, had to move some stuff around to ADA-accessible. I thought ADA could do something.
So there are, there are, there's at least one on the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, East Shore on the master. I want to thank the subcommittee, and I don't think George was ever put on it, but George showed up to the role as well, for the time and effort that he put on it. Thank you.
And I would expect to bring this, this couple-page document to any advisory committees or finance committees, just as a, just as a resource. Mr. Chairman, under item two, we've already discussed it briefly. I'll just refer the committee to the memo that I provided them, which gives you greater detail relative to bus lease options, and that is something we'll be working on the next few months, and I hope to have it back on this agenda in a couple of months. If we, the law says that if we are going to enter into a contract that exceeds three years, it requires a vote of the governing board. So I would be recommending to you right now, not to take action, but I would expect to bring to you in two months, a recommendation that we go out to bid for a lease, that is three years with a two-year option to extend. And because of that option to extend, it would need, it would need your vote. And that way, we're on record as doing that properly. Then we can go out to bid and see what the market fetches. But that is, that is definitely something that we'll talk about in the next couple of months, but I'd refer you to document six to digest it at your convenience. Item three is a marine science textbook. We're planning an elective out of the science department next year to diversify our offerings, so that textbook will be available, and I'll have it for you next month as well. And I will turn over to the administrators for any updates.
This is Doug. Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's.
Good evening. Good luck, you do.
Just a couple of updates for tonight. We started our first round of admissions acceptances, and those letters are in the mail, so to speak, so you should be hearing shortly from those who were successful in the first round, and those who are still waiting to be successful in the second round. But those, those went out, where they went out in big new envelopes that said, congratulations, and class of 2022. It's very exciting, so lots of excitement at the mailbox these upcoming days. To date, we have accepted 86 in-district students. Okay, so that's where we are right now.
Are they 86?
86. From a variety of in-district towns. Today, we had three students participate in the Massachusetts Girls in Trade Conference and Labor Fair. The girls were representing the electrical program, the metal fabrication and welding program, and HBAC. So they went, they represented us very well, they brought back a lot of great information, they were very excited. And last but not least, we will be sending 126 students to the Skills District Competition, and that's on March 2nd, which is the Friday after we get back from vacation, and that competition will take place at Great New Bedford, in New Bedford. And so we'll be sending those students off. They're competing in a number of different areas. We're competing in some different areas this year than we ever have before, including robotics. And so we're, we're very excited, and we're looking forward to some good results. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to thank the administrative team for putting together a series of presentations to our ninth-grade students on Monday. There were three one-hour presentations on the dangers of vaping, put on by the Karen Institute, and Michelle Craig, who we honored tonight as the staff member of the month. She was the point person on that. She did a great job coordinating that. So that was, that was a great idea and a great resource for our students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does no one finish business? New business budget certification vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the committee vote tonight to certify a fiscal 2019 budget in the amount of $13,401,939.
I'll take that as it was read.
Second.
Hanover?
Second.
Second by Whitman. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Statement of interest, Tom.
Yes, so you've seen the movie Groundhog Day?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we go, again. What you'll find in document eight is the official motion that we would need to have read in the record. Following your vote of this motion, I would then electronically upload the statement of interest, which is the document that follows the one-page motion. That statement of interest is what we have slightly modified with the help of DRA for the fourth consecutive year, talking about what our needs are. And this motion would then be filed with the MSBA. There's an April, an early April deadline, but we can take care of that before, before the end of the week. And then, from April of 2018 until approximately December of 2018, the MSBA does its due diligence in the process, their process continues. But our obligation to be considered to be in their core program would be, would be to start by approving this motion.
Which one? We get it right yet?
Yep, so this is document eight. So, Mr. Chairman, in the past week --
I'm too far ahead.
Motion is read.
Moved as read?
Second.
Believe it or not, I don't have document eight. I wonder if I can find it.
Yeah, you push it over.
Mr. Mahoney made a motion as read.
I don't think we can, Bob. I think they want us to read this in open session. Sorry to do it.
We have read it out loud in the past.
Yeah, we have done it in the past, and, because we, didn't we do it as read one of the time they sent it back?
It's a blur.
Yeah. You want to read it, Bob, or?
Good.
Good.
I don't have my glasses with me.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Hayward, he's, he's perfect at this.
One more time. Okay. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 14th, 2018, prior to the statement of interest submission date, closing date, the South Shore Regional School Committee, in accordance with the charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February 14th, 2018, for the South Shore Vocational Technical High School located at 476 Webster Street, Hanover, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school, district, to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
I'll take a motion.
Motion is read.
Brocklin?
Second.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, members of the committee.
You're welcome.
And Bob. Get him a water.
I got one.
Mr. Chairman, under item 10C, if I could speak to that briefly, this out-of-state field trip. You might remember Rosa making comments at our last meeting about an upcoming out-of-state trip, and I'll be asking for your vote of support for that tonight. Matt Filano, our student council advisor, I'd ask to also offer some remarks as to, give you a little more detail. This is a pioneering effort on the part of the school to participate in a service learning project, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about it. Mr. Filano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to take any questions. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on what the trip is. For a while, I mean, since I've been at the school, students have wanted to go on a trip, but it's not really in our nature to go on a pleasure cruise with our students. So we were looking for something a little bit more co-curricular, something that went along with our own mission statement, our own vision statement, and one of the things that came into kind of our minds And one of the things that came into kind of our mindset was going on a service trip. A trip where our students could put their skill sets to use to benefit a community. And we went, I mean, this has been about four years trying to get the thing off the ground. We finally, this year, kind of put together a plan and the plan was to go through a company that works with AmeriCorps. We are hoping to send 20 students and four faculty members to New Jersey, where even though this sounds a little bit strange, they're still rebuilding from Hurricane Sandy. And we've had the opportunity to go down. Our plan is to head down April vacation, so our students will not be missing any school. We'll be heading down that Friday, coming back that Wednesday. So students will be spending half of their vacation building a home. And it should be, it should be an interesting experience. It's the first time we've done it. I've learned a tremendous amount. And I thank my colleague Erin Brennan, who did some of the legwork to find these companies. But, you know, the challenge is, of course, we're asking 20 students to go over their vacation and it's going to, originally the cost was around $300. So to spend $300 to go work from fourth, from 8:30 to 4:30. And as you can imagine, it was a challenge, but we have had 20 students submit a request to do so. And we've done some tweaks. You know, the school is considering giving us the necessary transportation that eliminates the cost. We will be providing some of our own food, which eliminates the cost. And we've gotten it down to about $250 a student. That was the last that went out to those students, which is pretty good for five days, food, lodging, and everything. And recently, the Parents Association has graciously donated $1,500 to us, which is going to bring down the cost even more. One of our teachers is, excuse me, one of our parents is trying to organize a meat raffle, which may occur on either March 2nd or March 9th. And I'd like to thank members who have shown up at other meat raffles and look forward to their continued support. And I think that would be just great.
Ouch.
Which would again greatly lower the cost. Well, we may need another chaperone, so if anyone is interested, I can just pencil anyone in for maybe, something to think about. So that's, that's where we are hoping to go with this particular trip. And in the future, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping it's successful. I think it will be. The students are going to be getting more information. We actually get an information pack about the individuals, how's we're rebuilding, why they're still in this position, what we're doing, how it helps them. And I, I think it's a great way for the students to put their skills to use and really help people in the community. So I think it's a great opportunity. Does anyone have any questions? I can answer the phone.
Well, I would consider them if you had a red bow tie on today, but you didn't, so I don't.
I just changed it. Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a motion on the vote?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
That was Rockland and Whitman. I didn't get who said.
There's only one more time left. You have to, we're getting closer.
I was watching because it usually comes from this end on that one.
Situate Whitman.
Okay, Situate Whitman. Any further discussion?
I wanted to add, may I add something?
Sure, George.
I've had some experience with a church group in my town, which does an Appalachian service project, which sends a couple of busloads of teenagers that go down and they do, I'm not sure the scope of the work for the project in, in New Jersey, but I know that when they go down to, I'm not sure what state it is, but it's called the Appalachian Service.
It's usually Kentucky, wasn't it?
Yeah, and they are doing.
My daughter did that.
They're doing the same, you know, sort of scope of work in kind of the same amount of timeframe. And it's a wonderful project that students can really get a feel for what they're doing and get a, kind of an understanding of how things come together in the field. They may not be going to a trade school or involved with that or have a family member that's involved with it, but it, it's a real eye-opener for the, for the, for the students. It's certainly a help to the community down in Kentucky. And I think that there's a common thread where you were talking about the students here at the school chipping in on helping, putting in an ADA sink and they have a sense of accomplishment and they can look at this and go, I did something with that. They can also bring, that's a takeaway for them after they've gone down to New Jersey to work on this project. I think it's going to feed on itself. I think it's going to be, you know, limited seating in the future. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. But it's a wonderful concept and I really hope that this grows further. Thank you.
You know, Tom, on another note, we have our graduation. It might be nice to have those students who do go there, stand up, get applause for donating their time and their vacation to help people in another community.
All in favor? Unanimous. Christopher. No, wait a minute, we have a, this is Bob Hayward, surplus declaration.
Make a motion that the, that the items listed, I won't read them.
No, please, please don't.
The same portion to be marked surplus.
Second by Situate. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes, and we will make sure that our neighboring schools and towns are interested.
Yes.
Speaking of that, I don't know whether you saw it in the paper. One of our school, district schools, I thought it might be Whitman Hansen or Hanson, they, they have an auction on their surplus stuff coming up in the very near future. That, that's too much of a hassle.
Interesting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Now it's Christopher.
Warrants 14 and 15, totaling $1,67,127.49.
Second.
Second time.
Second.
Situate. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Any requests for action? Seeing none. Mr. Salvucci.
With due respect, the motion to adjourn.
It's not debatable. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.